2020 joint meeting of the Eugene City Council and Lane County Board of Commissioners. And I call this meeting of the City Council to order and turn to my colleague, Commissioner Buck.
Thank you, Mayor, and I too am happy to see everybody for our July 28, 2020 joint meeting. And we'll open our meeting up now as well.
Thank you all for joining us in this remote meeting format. We're using in response to Governor Brown's stay home, save lives order. This format enables the City Council and the County Board of Commissioners to meet and take care of business while keeping its members, staff, and the public safe. For work sessions like this one where there is no opportunity for public comment, those wishing to access the meeting can do so by watching the live stream available on our website, the broadcast on Comcast Channel 21, or by calling into one of the phone numbers listed for this meeting on the public webcast and meeting materials webpage on the city website. And as always, other avenues of communication with me, City Councilors, Commissioners, and are available. Councilors and Commissioners are available, including through email and voicemail. And thank you all again for joining us. So I just, I'm going to just make a few introductory comments. It's been quite some time since these two bodies have been able to come together. And a lot has changed since we last had a chance to talk together about the TAC report and our homeless strategies. And I'm very much looking forward to this meeting and appreciate this opportunity for us all to talk together. Our goal is to find some alignment here, make sure we're all on the same page about how we're going about this and what the challenge is before us. And there are some things that have changed dramatically in the last couple of months. So that I look forward to hearing the conversation. And will just say that I am very hopeful that as the City Council, as you talk about this, that your comments are fairly focused and clear in terms of weighing in on the new priorities as established, the new data that's made available. Because these are changing circumstances. And I'm hoping at the end of this that there's a lot of clarity about the priorities as described here, how those resonate with you and your reflections on the work ahead, which staff will work on while we're on break. So that is my appeal to you, that we hope to end this with a lot of clarity and my appreciation for everyone coming together. And with that, I guess I am turning this over to the manager, who takes it next?
Sure, I think Steve and I were going to play rock, paper, scissors about that. So this is fine, it's great. I know that Steve and I have been working really closely since I came into this role in October. So I'm one of the things that have changed. And I don't want to spend too many comments, but I will say that even just yesterday, a community member in a very, very serious way said, Sarah, what is the biggest, like, what is your biggest concern, what keeps you up at night? And I said, our unsheltered community. Because it just impacts so many people, not just the people that are unsheltered, but everybody that lives here, it seems to be top of mind, especially with the pandemic and economic crisis ahead of us. So that's really a relief to be here and to be here with all of you. I think this is my first time in this role with all of you, and I'm looking forward to the conversation. Steve, you want to say a couple of things?
Thank you, Sarah, and Mayor, and Chair. And I just wanted to offer that, Mayor, as you indicated, it's been, I think, over a year since the City Council and the Board of Commissioners have met in a joint session to discuss this topic. We had lofty goals and visions in May of 2019, when both of our governing bodies represented here tonight approved and endorsed moving forward with the strategies and goals identified in our Housing and Shelter Plan. I would say that we feel like we've accomplished a great deal as part of that plan in this time. One of the things that I have, and you'll hear this from Sarai and Sarai Johnson, I think represents our commitment to a true partnership between Lane County and the city of Eugene to solve this homelessness crisis that we have in our community. And I've been really proud at how our teams between the city and county have worked together in the course of the last year. I think that's one of the great successes that we've been able to achieve. We've also seen great challenges in the course of the past year. And of course, COVID-19 has exacerbated many of the challenges with our unhoused community. And of course, we're concerned, Sarah talked about what keeps her up at night. And of course, what keeps many of us up at night is the impacts of, the financial impacts and economic and social impacts of this global pandemic on those who may be housed currently, but at risk of becoming unhoused. So some successes, some great progress that we are making, and a lot of challenges and important work that is ahead of us. I, for one, feel really confident in our ability to meet those challenges because of the commitment that we have from our elected officials, both in the city and the county, as well as the talent that we have assembled in both of our organizations. And so we're pleased to provide this with you tonight. Really pleased with the work that Sarai Johnson, who's been here, started just before this pandemic hit us and has really been an incredible asset in bringing together our teams and identifying solutions for housing and homelessness in our community. So with that, I'm not sure, Mayor or Chair, if you have any additional comments. And then we would turn it over to Sarai Johnson.
Heather, I turn it over to you.
All right, well, I don't have anything more profound to say that you haven't already said. I look forward to seeing the presentation. And just a reminder, again, that we'll have a discussion after the presentation if we keep the questions really pointed and we can move along really well and get some progress done before the meeting's over. And with that, I think I'll send it over to Sarai Johnson.
Thank you, Chair Buck, and thank you, Mayor, and Council and Commissioners. I really appreciate taking the time this evening for this work. I know that you've been working on it for a really long time. And I'm having a fun realization at this moment that my screen won't share until I restart Zoom. So it turns out that I will be back in two seconds. So just sit tight, have fun without me, and my apologies.
Now, that's the kind of substantive presentation I like.
Right, it was quick.
It's called tap dancing.
Yeah. That was actually the most graceful technology fail I've ever seen.
The anticipation. You know, while she's getting herself back online, I can do a couple of the housekeeping things about the structure of this meeting will be familiar to all of you, which is that the Commissioner and I will keep our respective queues for Commissioner and Council. And we'll, as before, open it up for questions. And because of the different numbers on each, one board member followed by two counselors. And then we'll hold people to two-minute timeframe. So after the presentation, just be prepared for that. Thank you. Looks like Sarai's back.
I am, thank you so much. Well, here we are, and me again with you. So thank you for your patience on that fun technical glitch. As you know, everything is a bit in upheaval, so I appreciate, again, taking time for this conversation. Homelessness Systems Transformation is work that you all have laid the groundwork for and made great policy decisions about in the past. And I really look forward to the discussion today as we bring forward as much information as we can possibly share with you and look forward to your direction moving forward from here as well. Today, what we hope for is to really reaffirm a shared vision that we have for making homelessness rare, brief, and non-recurring in Lane County and the city of Eugene. This is work that, again, you've been laying the groundwork for for some time. And that, right now, if we take a look outside and see how many people are camping in visible places, and as Sarah alluded to a few minutes ago, the high number of unsheltered folks that we have here in our community, this might seem like a far-off vision. But I believe that we have the right leadership and the right resources in place to be able to make this vision a reality if we make wise decisions with the resources that we do have. So I'm looking forward to this happening in real life as we move forward. We're going to talk a little bit about the current situation. So I will share some numbers with you that are more detailed data points than we've had in the past. Then we'll go into a TAC update, which will include some lessons learned from COVID-19 and the emergency response that we mounted with that between the county and the city. And then we'll talk about updated projections based on our updated numbers around how many people and where people are in our community. And then we'll look at visioning around inclusion of multiple populations and also a potential regional reach. And then we'll have discussion time where all of you can share your thoughts. First, I'd like to touch base on the point-in-time count. As you know, the point-in-time or PIT is the main way that we have tracked how many people are unhoused or unsheltered in our community over many years. So this is a methodology that's used across the country, throughout all of HUD's Continuum of Care organizations. And Lane County, City of Eugene, and City of Springfield are the continuum of care in our area. So we've always used the point-in-time count along with everybody else in the country. What's nice about this is it does give us somewhat of an apples-to-apples-ish view on how many people are unhoused at any given moment. The challenges with the PIT are that it is a one-night-a-year effort. So it takes a lot to get out there, to do the count. We continue doing it, it will happen again until January, I believe. And then we also, you know, have to recognize that we can't capture every single person in one night of work. So it's really a lot like taking a 35-millimeter picture camera with you to Yosemite, taking one snapshot, bringing it home, and saying, this is what Yosemite's like. It's not enough to really give us the active daily data or monthly data that we need in order to make decisions, to mount interventions, to find ways to get as many people housed as we possibly can. Point-in-time count is useful in some ways, and again, very limited in others. So what has happened over the last year is, as of 2019, the HMIS team has been working on developing a homeless-by-name list. And this list is one that's dynamic, it's updated every single month. And we can see the number of people who are flowing in and out of the system. And we can also get a duplicated cumulative count of how many people have utilized homelessness services across our service providers who are participating in the Homelessness Management Information System, HMIS. So this homeless-by-name list is something that allows us to keep a real finger on the pulse and to, just to mix metaphors, also be able to see more like a moving picture of what is actually happening on the ground among our service providers and how many people and where they are and what other demographics they have or exhibit are experiencing homelessness in Lane County at any given month. The April-through-June 2020 by-name list allows us to see some trends really close up. So in the next slide, I'll show you our annual trends. But what this one illustrates in just a month-by-month numbers game is that people access services much more, I guess, I'll say aggressively, because I didn't think of a better word fast enough. They access services a lot more often in the wintertime than they do in the summer and the spring in warmer months. So people typically need more access to shelter. Of course, we have winter strategies that we've used in the past, like EAGON Warming Centers and other interventions that serve people seasonally or that people typically access more seasonally. As you can see, from April to May and then all the way into June, our numbers have dropped significantly as far as how many people are accessing services. What this doesn't mean is that we don't have as many people who are unhoused or unsheltered. It just simply means that they aren't accessing the services that they typically are accessing, again, in those colder months. This particular swath of time also very likely does have some COVID impacts attached to it as well because, as I'm sure you recall, most of us were not going anywhere from March until June 5th, at least. So a lot of our homelessness services providers were also relatively low-capacity, virtually closed. So that is another reason why these numbers have shifted over the last few months. And then this is our 12-month system overview. So as you can see, last June, that really short bar over there to the left is one that's a bit of an anomaly. But all the rest of the months sort of flow in a bit of a pattern. So as you see, most of the months that are not in the summer tend to hover between 4,000 to 4,500 people who, in that month, are experiencing homelessness and accessing services. So that's the number of people who are seen across our system. And some of the important demographics that we should really call out and look at in our community are our high number of unsheltered people. So in Lane County, 80% of our unhoused folks are considered unsheltered, which means that they sleep in places that are not meant for human habitation. That typically means that they're sleeping outside, they might be sleeping in a car, they might be sleeping in an abandoned building, they might be sleeping really anywhere that is not a house or a home or an apartment or a hotel. So that is a challenge. One of the other challenges that we have in our system, which I'll talk a little bit more about later, is that people who are living in alternative shelter sites, like the community-supported shelters, rest stops, and Nightingale and other places like that in Cottage Gorge or car camping, are technically still considered unsheltered for HUD. So when we're reporting to HUD to give them our continuum of care outcomes, our high number of unsheltered people really counts against us. Some things that other communities have been able to do to reduce the number of people who are unsheltered, who are counted as unsheltered, while still activating these great grassroots efforts is that they've found ways to turn those units into habitable structures that HUD will accept as habitable for emergency shelter purposes. So there is some work we could do to bring that number down. That said, we have a little over 300 people currently in those alternative shelter sites at this point. So that number of 80% is actually not that significantly impacted by the number of folks who are in alternative shelters, unfortunately. So that number is still very high compared to the national rate of about 35% of people unsheltered, meaning that 65% of people who are considered homeless, literally homeless or chronically homeless, are sheltered in emergency shelters or other programs. We also have a relatively high rate of chronic homelessness, which is a technical definition, I'll give you the greatest overview I can. It's people who have been homeless continuously for 12 months and have a disability or who have been homeless for at least a total of 12 months over the last three years. There are a few little other caveats in there, but that's the basics of who that means we're working with. So these are folks who've been homeless, and typically, they are mostly unsheltered. Across the country, about 25% of the population of unhoused folks are considered chronically homeless. And here, again, we have a relatively larger percentage of people who are experiencing chronic homelessness. Where people live throughout the county, and I've said this on purpose because I think it's really valuable for us to recognize that people who are living outside are our neighbors and they are living where they live, usually because that's where they choose to be. In, or rather, not that they choose to be unsheltered, but that they want to live in their community. So as of the June 2020 homeless-by-name list, we have about 75% of people who are in Eugene. That number fluctuates year-round, it's everywhere, anywhere between 70% to 75% at any given month. So that can shift a little bit. We typically see about 10% in Springfield and about 5% in Cottage Grove, 4% in Florence, and 2% in Oak Ridge. What this doesn't reveal is the fact that Eugene, Cottage Grove, Florence, and Oak Ridge all have very similar levels of per capita homelessness, which indicates that it is probably a good idea for us to start to reach out and look to our rural communities to see how we can support and help them serve their unsheltered population as well. And the same goes for Springfield. I think it's, I'll speak a little bit more later to a regional approach, but this is sort of the breakdown of where people tend to be. Some of the things that we learned during the COVID response. I personally think there are three things that we learned between the various ESF6 branches. So that's the Emergency Support Function 6, Working on Vulnerable Populations and Mass Care. We were all very focused between the City of Eugene, City of Springfield, and Lane County Emergency Operations Centers on supporting our unhoused population through that recovery, or rather, that emergency response branch. So one of the things that we learned was that we saw a natural experiment happen between the Lane County EOC's launch of the Emergency Respite Shelters, which was a congregate shelter option, which means that people were all in one location and one place, sleeping in the same room. While the City of Eugene launched a distribution center to support people getting supplies that they needed so they could shelter in place, even if they were in encampments. And their other strategy was designated temporary shelter sites, which were smaller areas that they set up outside of, or that you set up outside of, the few of the different rec centers throughout town. So those were two different things that had different results and different impacts in neighborhoods. One of the things that I think is really important for us to recognize is that the number of people that we're bringing together who have previously not been associated should be thought about and really strategized about. So as we're moving forward into how are we going to find ways to house people as much as possible, I think that's one of the things that we're going to really want to look at, is what were the neighborhood impacts between these two different approaches? And how can we more thoughtfully deploy these different interventions as we move forward, preferably hand-in-hand with neighborhood associations and with other neighbors who are interested in being a part of the solution to this very big challenge that we're facing right now? Another thing that I think was really useful was that we did talk between all three of those EOCs every day for quite a long time. So we really moved to twice-a-week meetings after about two and a half months or so. But before that, we were talking every day so that we could understand what's happening in Eugene, what's happening in Springfield, what are the ways that we need to collaborate? That was really useful. As a learning, I would say that the more integrated that we can be, the better off we will be. I think more great minds and more coordinated efforts really make for better results. So that's another thing that I think is really valuable as we move forward in our overall homelessness systems transformation and our immediate response to making sure that people have adequate shelter as we're entering into cold weather and the winter season shortly. And then the third thing that I think is really valuable about what we've learned from COVID-19 is how can we engage with the community and others who see that this is a challenge to work towards solutions? One of the things that I have absolutely seen come out of this COVID experience and that initial emergency response is a lot of community energy and momentum around moving forward on participating in being a part of the solution to our lack of shelter for people in our system. So that's a very promising thing. Not everyone has all the same ideas about how this should work, but all of those ideas have a space for us to listen to and have at the table. So that's a really exciting trend. As you can imagine, as we're entering into the winter season, we have, oh, this is the wrong slide, let me back up, pretend that I didn't say that. Hi, some of the immediate priorities that we've been working on as a TAC implementation team is, across our City of Eugene and Lane County staff, is identifying the four main things that need to happen in the near term. This is our 90-days priorities. So that started at the beginning of July and goes through September. And these are things that we are working diligently to design and deploy in that timeframe. One is street outreach. This also could be attributed to a great lesson that we learned from COVID-19 and our emergency response. City of Eugene did a great job of coordinating with Lane County Human Services Division staff to create a street outreach approach, to meet people where they are, those who are unsheltered, to make sure that they have supplies, information, and other things that are necessary for them to be well and healthy. So street outreach is one of the things that is a top priority in the TAC report, but it's also something that we see as a necessity moving forward in the near term. So we're working between the city and the county to design that. And we will be planning to hire some folks to staff outreach teams in the very near future. So that's coming down the pike rather quickly. The second is landlord engagement. As you all know very well, we are facing a possible rental crisis with people who will be facing the eviction moratorium ending in October and, of course, the very imminent end of the federal unemployment match, which is a very big contributor, most folks are saying, who are landlords, to people being able to pay their rents. So we're looking to engage landlords in the near term on all of the things that they might need in order to help people stay in place. As you know, on the other side of things, we do have a very robust rental assistance program. I know that City Council just allocated more funds toward that effort yesterday. So we're looking to engage with landlords and work with them as well, not just for the near term, but also long-term. What we hope to do is lay the groundwork to ask them what they need in order to rent more willingly to people who have permanent supportive housing vouchers, which has been a barrier to placement in the past. If you recall, we only have about an 87% utilization rate of our permanent supportive housing vouchers. And that could be a lot higher if we had more great partnerships with landlords in our community. So that's another big, important thing that we have going on. And then the third and fourth thing are generally talked about together. I'm only separating them out right now because of where we are at this moment versus where we thought we would be and where we would like to be in the future. So as you know, Low Barrier Shelter/Navigation Center is one of our top priorities. We've been working toward this Low Barrier 75-bed shelter for quite some time. I know at the city and the county level, where we have a lot of progress on that. And yet, we also have an opportunity at this moment to test drive some of these pieces and parts of what will make this program really of what will make this program really successful. What by separating out the navigation system side of things and that case management support and the help helping people figure out where they can go and and where they can be from the designated location uh of the navigation center. That is still our long-term goal, that is absolutely still where we're heading in this moment. Because we have the uh COVID nineteen pandemic crisis on hand, we also are facing a situation where we need to find as much non-congregate shelter as we possibly can for people to be in. Non-congregate means that they have individual space where they're able to go about their day without interacting with a whole lot of other people. Um so that could be something like is in this picture right here, Conestoga Huts work for that, tents work for that, um motels work for that. So we'll talk a little bit of more more about that in a second. But this is really a way for us to see what works best. Um it's great, I think, for us to have a variety of approaches. And we also have a very rich and wonderful tapestry of locally grown interventions that have done an awesome job of meeting the needs of our unhoused and unsheltered community in a lot of really creative and impactful ways. So I'd love for us to be able to build into that capacity uh from the ground up as we're even as we're approaching this crisis moment and the emergency uh ahead of us. Some of the ways that we might be able to accomplish non-congregate shelter in the coming months, uh and these immediate low barrier shelter options are meant to be uh an intervention for twelve to eighteen months at least. Uh some of them may be able to continue beyond that, um most significantly safe sleeping villages and quick build units. Um so sleep safe sleeping villages is sort of just a catch-all term for rest stops, microsites and those types of uh and the designated temporary shelter sites would have been considered a safe sleeping village as well. What we're suggesting that we do is create these in as many places as we can with the help of neighborhood associations, faith communities, business community and others, so that we can find spots that people will be able to shelter in a safe location. Um we also have the opportunity potentially to lease up motels and or hotels um in the coming few months. That would be a great intervention for people, especially those who have high medical needs or highly medically vulnerable to complications from COVID nineteen. Um and that could also be something that could phase into um what I'm calling quick build units for this. Some uh in other presentations, I call it modulators or you know, other kinds of of structures. But ultimately, that would be anything from upgrading safe sleeping villages to have have habitable dwellings so that we can count those toward our continuum of care outcomes, which in turn would bring more money into our system from HUD. Um and or we could design uh tiny house villages or uh we could get modulators that we could place now and later stack into multi-story units for permanent supportive housing or other options like that, depending on the resources that are available to us. So it is an opportunity um to find ways to add inventory to our emergency shelter and housing system longer term, even while we're serving this immediate need as well. And then finally, we have less risky congregate shelter, and that is uh simply smaller congregate shelters in larger spaces. People need to have at least a hundred and forty-four square feet each to sleep. And then there's also additional expansion needs beyond that for common spaces and eating areas and things like that. Ideally, if we do need to mount this intervention in the coming winter, um it would be best if we were able to do that in cohorts. And so kind of keeping those groups relatively small and encouraging them to stay there uh longer term would be ideal. Uh we would like to avoid a situation where we're bringing a lot of unassociated people together in one place and then dis- dispersing them to the streets um right after. We're going to talk a little bit about updated projections. Um this is something that has sort of stemmed from our better information from the homeless by name list that we have. And also um in light of the fact that COVID nineteen has really taken a lot of the capacity, especially for emergency shelter beds out of our system uh and at the same time has made our typical winter strategies untenable. We've typically expanded at dusk to dawn and added more beds there, which is not something that is on the table at this moment. Um and we also have really relied on Egan Warming Centers, which are volunteer-driven in donated space typically from churches and other public um places. And then we also have um the fact that we're bringing people together all in one place again, who weren't together the night before and then dispersing them to the streets, which is really a unpleasant idea in a pandemic, to say the least. Uh so this this is a really big challenge. Uh we also noticed that the volunteer base for Egan Warming Centers tend to be people over sixty, so that is putting them in the high-risk category. So it's really challenging. We have to find a way to make sure that people stay not only safe from the pandemic, but also safe from freezing weather over the winter. And that means that we need to be creative. So that's part of this is like, what do we need to do right now? And then part of this is, what does the big picture look uh based on these new numbers? As you might recall, uh when the Technical Assistance Collaborative came and did their work with us, uh they were using our point-in-time count numbers, as I mentioned, more of a snapshot. And so these numbers are based on the homeless by name list and then updating them uh for what we think we need now. This is a multi-pronged expansion, so it's going to look a little bit different from how it looked in the TAC report, but it will be integrating many of the same things and adding in a couple of other pieces. So first of all, we have street outreach, which is reaching people when they're unsheltered still. So this is finding folks who are living outside or in other places not meant for human habitation and providing them with relationship, helping them solve their issues, helping them remove barriers that they have to housing and to meeting their goals. So uh next step up from that is alternative shelters. So these shelter sites that are important because they serve a really big purpose in that they can stand up quickly, operate quickly and they're relatively affordable to run. Um they're also really nimble and have a great opportunity for innovation. Then we have emergency shelter, which is basically just shelter that meets um HUD habitation guidelines. So we have the opportunity also to shift more alternative shelter into more um habitable emergency shelter per HUD. Uh and that is one thing that we could also do. Next up, we have transitional housing. In the TAC report, they had some recommendations about that. Uh we are going to have a few more recommendations around transitional housing, especially it's appropriate for people who have extra barriers to housing. Maybe they have um multiple kind of co-occurring issues that are happening all at once. They might have high medical needs, they might have substance use issues that might need a little bit more intensive support. So transitional housing is appropriate for our system while we ultimately are looking to get into a housing-first model. So rapid rehousing is one of the ways that we can deploy housing first. That's a way to help people who are homeless or chronically homeless access housing in the near term with rental assistance. So it as it allows them to basically take vouchers and get into housing as as quickly as possible. And then we have permanent supportive housing, which uh as you all realize is affordable housing that also comes with a system of supports behind that. So people who are able to access housing right away without necessarily meeting prerequisites to housing and not necessarily being required to participate in any services unless they want to. Most people do, uh so that is a great way that permanent supportive housing works. And then over time, not everyone no needs the services that come along with uh permanent supportive housing, but they might still need the housing subsidy. And that's where these move-on um vouchers come in play into play. So helping people who are kind of through the woods on the services side of permanent supportive housing, ready to move into something else, and that is another really important strategy for us. This is the original TAC recommendation. So this was based on the twenty eighteen point-in-time count of thirteen hundred sixty-five single or partnered adults. They suggested that uh with transitional housing, which is the furthest over to the left, the teal one, that we increase utilization and turnover. So we could maximize how many of those are being used and then try to move people through them a little bit more quickly to generate flow in that system. Um they suggested a hundred and eighty-nine move-on vouchers through um their recommendations. They didn't specifically put this in the table, but that's what it ends up with uh when you do the math. Uh same with rapid rehousing, they suggested investing, I believe it's five hundred thousand dollars in rapid rehousing resources over two years to see how that goes. That amounts to about two hundred and fifty of uh rapid rehousing individuals or households that would be served. And then they suggested a seventy-five bed low-barrier shelter and three hundred and fifty units of permanent supportive housing, um which are numbers that I utter in my sleep at this point. So these are the kind of sacrosanct recommendations that they offered to us and and it was based again in data that was available to them at that point in time. Now that we have the homelessness by name list, we are able to see that those numbers will probably need to adapt. So as you saw, but I didn't call out on another page because your pictures are covering that side of my screen. We did have nine thousand six hundred and seventy-nine unduplicated people accessing homelessness services in twenty nineteen based on the high uh on the by-name list. And so what that shows us is that we really do have a lot more people flowing in and through our system than we thought. Uh as you saw earlier, at least four thousand to forty-five hundred per month, generally, especially during the colder months, um are using these services. And many others, as you can tell, are not always accessing services every single month. So we have a lot of kind of in and out uh in our system. What we would like to do is make sure that we create adequate housing and shelter for people so that we no longer have eighty percent of our unhoused population unsheltered. So these uh recommendations are based on some calculations that were done um by our H M I S administrator. And uh she used the inflow and outflow and uh some other fancy footwork to create these based on the homeless by name list. So we have an additional a hundred and ten transitional housing units over five years that are suggested to be added to our system. The move-on vouchers bump up just a little bit from a hundred and eighty-nine to two hundred. So we'd be making a concerted effort to work with people in permanent supportive housing to help them prepare to move on. Uh rapid rehousing will stay constant at two hundred and fifty per year that we would hopefully be hoping. And then emergency shelter and alternative shelter, you might notice, are quite different than um what they were before. And these numbers uh are really meant to see how much um system capacity do we need to add for emergency shelter beds or alternative shelters? And again, alternative shelters is really here because it's sometimes the fastest way that we can get people into some kind of shelter. That said, again, if we can come up behind that to make these habitable, great, let's do that because then we'll be able to count them as well and they will no longer count as unsheltered. And then finally, we have PSH, um where we've only recommended six additional units over TAC's uh original recommendation. One thing I think is really valuable to note here is that what this is is a very small picture of sort of the first rungs of the housing ladder. So if you can imagine that past PSH is the move-on vouchers, although I put them at the beginning because they are a lower number. Um but that would help people move into more traditional housing. Um maybe it could still be subsidized through housing choice vouchers or otherwise, uh but they might not need that PSH. Not everyone in our system requires supportive housing to get into housing. So a lot of people that are unhoused or unsheltered right now have jobs. They just simply cannot afford a place to live right now. Uh that's a a real number of people that is rising as well. So this is, this reflects not that we don't need more permanent supportive housing. We do need as much as we can get, really. Um but the other reality is that we need more affordable housing or housing, rather, that is affordable to people uh with very low or extremely low or no income. So these are all um kind of the big picture strategies I'm sure we'll have a lot to talk about um on this particular slide. This is also an opportunity to step back a little bit and see um who do we have in our community? The TAC work and the recommendations around our seventy-five low bed low-barrier shelter and the permanent supportive housing numbers are all focused on single or partnered adults. Some of those folks can be segmented out even further to find specialized solutions that they really need. Um older adults have a lot of needs, people who are medically fragile in particular have a lot of challenges. In this environment, older adults and people who are medically fragile are especially at risk because of the pandemic. Um but they also might require additional supports or help that is not currently available to them in the system. People with mental and behavioral health challenges, uh people who are justice-involved, youth and families who were not necessarily included in the TAC work before, but who are a very significant population, who also need support and resources. And then finally, making sure that we're really equitably working with people um who have been underserved traditionally um and who tend to be overrepresented in our homeless population, people of color, um Latinx populations uh in particular. The two most challenging things that we have at the moment is finding sites for um the safe sleeping villages and other interventions as well as building capacity in our system. Our service providers have done an amazing job of rising to the occasion. Um in one case, scaling from just a handful of staff to more than fifty to try to meet the county and the city of Eugene and the city of Springfield's needs um in the height of our emergency response, which was an amazing way for them to scale up um really fast. What I think would be really helpful is if we can connect and weave together our service provider community in really strategic and thoughtful ways, investing in them and making sure that they have the depth and breadth of capacity that we need in order to run a successful um homelessness intervention system. So those are two big parts and pieces of of what we're looking at for this season and this moment. But it's also something that will have long-term impact on our system as well. Adding more sites and that in turn adding more emergency or alternative shelter beds will be important. And then the capacity to run those sites will also be very critical to the success of all of the recommendations that we're working to implement. This is also a moment that calls for regional collaborations. Isn't something that the the county can do alone or that the City of Eugene can do alone? Or even that we, as the county and the City of Eugene together, can do all by ourselves? This is a county-wide issue uh and will continue to be a county-wide issue. We address it in a lopsided way, then we'll have lopsided results. And so I think what we really have an opportunity to do at this moment is to recognize how much room do we need to have at this table and maybe pull out another leaf or two so that we can pull up a few more chairs around the table to work on this um in a concerted way. We have county-wide priorities that we want to see happen across the system. Um we have systems transformation that we'd like to see happen across the system. And then each city has its own unique focus and approach and style, which I think is really important to honor. That's one of the things that makes the City of Eugene so special, the City of Springfield special, what makes all of these unique locations attractive to the people who want to live in them. And then also together, creating a coordinated approach so that we can try to work on this together and continue moving kind of this boulder forward with more hands on deck um and more force behind it. This is a high-level twelve-month operating estimate. So I want to just be very transparent that we are still working on dialing in numbers and finding out what makes the most sense between the city and the county. So we have some work left to do on that and a great team of people who are ready and willing to do that. What we have at this moment is um some general solid-ish estimates um based on some different staffing models. These are spelled out in more detail with the exception of the Navigation Center, um seventy-five bed Navigation Center in the um Inclement Weather Strategies Report uh that I shared with the Board of County Commissioners last Tuesday. Uh so if you don't have that, I'm happy to make it available to you and you'll you'll be able to see kind of what these budget assumptions are. So for twelve months, this is the basic estimate of what it would cost to run these things. Notable exception on the quick build, um those are not including the capital. And the main reason for that is simply because it's all of the different ways that we could approach this cost wildly different amounts of money. So depending on which interventions we're interested in seeing, we could create different pro formas for those. At this moment, I think I'm just leaving it at the operating cost only and then we can add in the capital later. So this is the basic expense of what it would cost to run these interventions for these numbers of people over the course of twelve months. One point nine eight to operate a hundred beds in quick build shelters, so running somewhat like permanent supportive housing in some ways. Safe sleeping villages, six point four four million for a year for five hundred beds. Motels at four point six million for twelve months for a hundred and fifty beds, including services. And in fact, all of these include food as well as services and staffing. Um and then the congregate shelter as well. Um we have the Navigation Center here. The estimated operating budget for that, based on the staffing recommendations and the TAC report and some numbers that we've crunched for that, uh is estimated to be about one point nine eight million. Um that would be for seventy-five beds. So over the year, that adds up to a little over seventy dollars per bed night, um which is, I think, useful information. I I like to compare the per-bed-night cost personally, uh because I do feel like it kind of gives us a sense of the value that we're able to get um with, you know, kind of paying for our buck in these different approaches. So these are some high-level estimates. Again, these numbers will be dialed in. We are looking for your direction and thoughts on what you would like to see going forward. And then we're happy to dig into that uh financial work and come back with more specifics. Ah, and now I turn it back to you, Mayor Venice and Sheriff Buck. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, uh Sarai. That was a phenomenal presentation. Thank you so much. It was a huge amount of material, reflected an incredible amount of uh work and research and was very clearly presented. And um I'm letting councilors know that I'm forming a queue. And Commissioner Buck, I don't know if you want to say anything?
Yeah, we'll do the same. So Commissioner, since we're on a new platform, on the Zoom platform, w- we're not as used to it. Uh so under the participants, you'll see people be able to raise their hand and there will be an icon on your device to raise your hand and the hands will go up. Like Counsel Prior has put his hands up. And as people raise their hands, it will show them in order and way in uh in order of them raising their hand. And what we thought we do is do two counselors and then a commissioner. So I see a couple of counselors came up uh first and then Commissioner Bozovic. So we'll go in that order and just raise your hand as you would like uh to make a comment or ask a question.
Thank you. So we'll start out with Counsel Prior.
Thank you. Very um good presentation, Sarai. I really appreciated uh how you're trying to uh um continuously update the numbers as as we go along from what the original report was. And uh obviously, we are all struck by the change in the um emergency shelter requirement. Um going from seventy-five uh to Going from seventy-five to eight hundred, you know, if you count the two together. That's a, that's a huge shift. And so one of the questions I had, and, and really you can bring me up to speed on how this works into the actual counting is the original seventy-five were low barrier shelter. Of the, of the four seventy-five and the three fifty, are those still all considered low barrier? Or is it a mix of low barrier and regular shelter? Well, what's, how do those eight hundred beds work out?
I, I think it will be site dependent. So it will depend on the places that we put these. So if a faith community, for instance, wasn't comfortable with people who were, we were using maybe a harm reduction approach with, then that, I mean, that's kind of the easiest example I can think of. That would mean that those shelters might be a little higher barrier, but that I would love for us to create as much low barrier shelter as we possibly can.
Okay, yeah, no, and I, I think that, I think that's good because you want to try to be as flexible as you can be. This is a tall number. And so the other question I had was to what degree would a place like the Eugene Mission, which has three hundred and fifty, four hundred beds, it's not low barrier, but it has, from the tour I took, all of the conditions that a public shelter would have. In other words, it has no restrictions beyond what a public shelter would have other than a dry requirement, but otherwise it's the same as a public shelter. Would those three fifty, four hundred beds be able to be incorporated into this count?
The missions beds, if they're not using them, it would take a lot of work. They have actually instituted a low barrier pilot program recently, and so they're experimenting with that and kind of seeing how that goes. And I, I can't really speak to, I, I'm not sure if you mean like using their facility to add some of these beds? Is that what?
Counting their facility as, as, in other words, are they already counted or would their beds be able to be counted here?
They are counted already. Yes, they participate in HMIS, even though they're, they don't receive funds from the county or the city. Yeah.
Okay, so these are over and above that four hundred beds?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I'm good. I'm glad. I, I, I want to get a sense of where we are, what capacity we're already at, and how much further we need to go. And so what I'm hearing is if you take into account the existing shelter capacity, including the mission, we still have to come up with eight hundred more beds.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. I'm thinking three, not two.
I, I apologize. I forgot to remind everyone, you have two minutes. Counselor Cyret.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarai, very much. That was an impressive presentation. And I really appreciate the update to our plans. I just wanted to step back because I think this didn't get mentioned. I think it's important to remind the public that one of our overarching goals here is to reach functional zero in terms of people being without shelter in our community. So that means we will still likely see people becoming homeless at certain times because of their personal circumstances, but we would be poised to help them get back into housing quickly. And we wouldn't be having hundreds of people living on our streets like we do today. So, yeah, I think that's important to frame. So based on what you're saying, it seems like we do need to look at identifying a number of different shelter sites. I did have a question. The summary of lessons learned from the San Francisco Navigation Center seemed to focus mainly on kind of the negative lessons learned. And I was wondering if there were any positive lessons learned from that, if you're able to speak to that.
It's a very good question. To be honest, I wasn't in attendance at that conference. But I can ask the people who were there to see if they could share some of that. That, this is just the information that I received. And I think was maybe the main focus of that particular session.
Gotcha. Thanks. So, and then we do have neighborhood associations in Eugene who are coming forth with this idea of microsites within neighborhoods. And so I'm also really hoping that we can partner with the county in finding some more microsites, because I think that's going to be a heavy lift that we're all going to need to partner on. And lastly, I think the other piece that's not part of this plan, but I think I'm hoping the county could look at as a plan as well is drug and alcohol access, counseling access, mental health services access. Because many of the folks who are experiencing, you know, being unsheltered are suffering from those things and need that help. And we might have a place to put them for a while. They need that services in order to transition into permanent housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bozovic.
Thank you. So I'm, I'm a little shocked looking at the, the two graphs between the the original TAC recommendations and the updated five-year projections. Partly in because it seems to be heavily dependent on temporary emergency shelter. And my real concern is, is I don't believe temporary emergency shelter really helps people. I believe you need to have a housing-first policy that includes that intensive case management. And many of the strategies that are under emergency shelter and alternative shelter don't include that case management, which means you're not helping people deal with why they're homeless and fixing it. And therefore, you're not changing the curve in the long run. So I, I'm real concerned about this, this new chart that shows us so heavily investing in temporary facilities. Rather than, you know, if you look at the previous chart, the heavy investment was permanent supportive housing, where that case management's there. And, and you're dealing with those long-term issues, whether you're getting folks addiction treatment, you're dealing with the mental health or the, the traumas and the victimization they've, they've, they've experienced. Getting them some education, connecting them with, with, you know, financial skills and how to be a good tenant, everything else. You know, and particularly, you know, when you look at some of the strategies that are being considered. The only, you know, one of the few that, that, the few that qualify as quote sheltered under HUD's definition, you know, hotels at thirty thousand per bed per year. When, when, under our FUSE pilot, we were sheltering people for seventeen thousand with that intensive case management. So something doesn't quite add up here for me. Although I do know our FUSE pilot's a few years old, so the numbers may need to be inflated. So it might be twenty thousand a year. But
Just a, just a reminder, we have two minutes.
I want to express my concern about temporary versus permanent solutions for homelessness.
Okay, Counselor Zalika.
Thank you. Sarai, that was awesome presentation. And we did a good job hiring you. I like your enthusiasm. I think it's contagious, hopefully, throughout the whole community on this topic. This is a lot of work and I like the progression that it's had. And, and I pretty much like the plan. I did have a question about when you have these numbers like nine thousand six hundred seventy-nine unduplicated people who accessed homeless services and another six thousand twenty-three that have used homeless services. What does that mean? What does accessed and used mean? Is it just walking in and finding out information or is it actually getting some services? Can you explain that a little better?
Sure. Thank you for asking that. That's actually a really important distinction to make. So the nine thousand six hundred and seventy-nine number is based on people who went to a service provider who offered them anything from food to vouchers for clothes or motel or hotel voucher. So lots and lots of different strategies across the system. All of the people who are on that list are confirmed to be literally homeless, experiencing homelessness in some way. This number does not include all the people who don't access services. And it also doesn't include the people who access services from providers who don't participate in the homelessness management information system. So if anything, the number of people who are unhoused and unsheltered is likely quite a bit higher than this. But that's, that's what it means. So it, when people, just like to get tiny, a tiny bit nerdier, when people access a service, it just means that they have a case open for them in the homelessness management information system and then closed out. And that's how we get kind of our monthly inflow and outflow. So I don't know if that clarifies, but, but hopefully a little bit better.
Yeah, a little bit better. And, and the pit, of course, like you said, is a snapshot. So are these number, these numbers are based off of the data we get from the service providers and the and as opposed to the pit, right?
Sorry, yes, yes, it is.
I thought I asked you a stumper question. Right. Okay, that's all the questions I had at this point. Thank you.
Counselor Simple.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. It's really great. My, my favorite part is how the colored pumps change between the two iterations. I wish they didn't have to, but I, it seems much more realistic to me. Boy, I really want housing first. I want enough houses so I can put everybody in one. And I don't, and it's not going to happen fast enough. What are we going to do without Eagan? You know, we, we saw the, the COVID camping problems and microsites are great. How are we going to find them? It's the first problem of every single strategy we've had is where. And the second one is who's going to make it work. And the third one is how are we going to pay for it? So these are a lot of new, new needs, new buildings and, and yeah, I want it. But how do we go from seventy-five to, you know, eight hundred and I don't know how we're going to pay for it. I'm really, really concerned about this winter, the respiratory illness and people out in the weather. Sometimes without even a tent. And, and if you have one, it could be moved constantly. Which comes back to my plea. Can we let people sleep, not causing problems while they're asleep? And yes, people need services. We need to help them to learn how to live in houses, but we have to keep them alive first. And, and that's critical. And Counselor Cyret, talking about mental health, boy, that's, if I could do one thing for this city county, would be mental health providers. And youth, the youth are, are not getting enough help. I saw that there's one, one new thing, but I haven't investigated it. And all the other marginalized and more fragile populations. Concerned about those. Thank you.
Is there a commissioner that would like to speak? If not, we'll just continue down the list, Mayor, if that's okay with everybody.
Now, I see Counselor Cyret wants a second round unless her hand just didn't go down. Oh, here we go. Let me give Counselor Prior a first round. And you do want a second one? Okay. So, but let's give Counselor Prior a first round.
This is actually a second round.
It's a second round for you too. That's right. Right. If we're on a second round already, are there any other counselors who want a first round? Well, Alan wants a second round also. All right.
And Commissioner Farr just put up his hand as well.
Okay, let's like Commissioner Fargo then. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair Buck, Mayor Venice. Good job running this difficult meeting to run. Just a couple of things to point out. And Sarai, the first thing will be a question to you. We have multi-jurisdictional bodies that work on homelessness and homelessness issues. One is the Human Services Commission, one is the Poverty and Homelessness Board, and the, another is the Shelter Stakeholder Committee. Can you comment about the value of those multi-jurisdictional bodies where people from each jurisdiction and the or from different jurisdictions in the county have opportunities on a regular basis? Unlike this once a year meeting, have opportunities on a regular basis to meet and discuss the dynamic issues surrounding homelessness. Sarai?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Farr. Yes, those, all of those bodies do really important work all the time. And so it is wonderful to have them on the ground with that. And the newly formed, reformed Shelter Stakeholder Committee, I think, is a great example of inclusion. So it's wonderful to have Mayor Venice on there. And also Mayor Lundberg from Springfield is a member of that. And we did just vote to expand the membership of that group. I think that they can be very instrumental in helping us to move these things forward. Bringing together people from really all sectors and from as many different service provider groups as possible. So it's wonderful to have them at the table. And I think will be a really important part for us starting to put the puzzle pieces together.
Thank you, Sarai, for that. And in particular, the Shelter Stakeholder, the Reform Committee, you. I'd like to thank you for being the principal staff support for that committee. And that is a committee that has the mayors of the two large cities, Mayor Venice and Mayor Lundberg on there. But that committee also has Cheryl Balsor up on the mission, Dan Bryant has joined us, Chris McAllister with lived experience, Sean Murphy, Jacob Fox is on that committee, along with another, number of other folks from, from providers. So it's an opportunity for for multi-jurisdictions to discuss ongoing and dynamic events as they occur. And thank you for your, your support on that one. The, the main thing I wanted to point out, and this is something that comes through the work on those committees, is the realization that whatever we do with money, money's only money, you know, that's for a hundred million dollars of it. That's only money. If we don't have a geographic location to place the sites, we're going to fail. Recently, we had evidence of that in Bethel when we rejected eleven homeless boys who were in school. Prior to that, we had examples of rejection. So it's all boots on the ground. Everybody has to be working at all times on finding geographically dispersed, dispersed sites that are acceptable to the neighborhoods. Thank you. I may come in for a second round.
Okay, I will reopen this for Counselor Cyret and then Counselor Prior.
Thank you, Mayor. So I realized I had a couple of questions I didn't ask, but to kind of thinking about the remarks from Commissioner Bozovic, you know, I agree that the housing first model is kind of been the ideal, but reading through the packet information, the San Francisco experience showed that at least for, for their system, they moved, you know, six hundred and fifty people into permanent housing through their navigation center and ninety-five percent of them ended back up homelessness in homelessness. So wasn't clear why that wasn't successful, but it could be that a slower approach providing shelter with case management. So our rest stops have, have, you know, essentially case management as part of their model. Can build capacity for people to be successful in permanent supportive housing. And then you had mentioned, Sarai, that, you know, there might be an opportunity to turn some of our temporary shelters into HUD approved sites. And I didn't know if you had any thoughts about how we might go about doing that.
Sure, yeah, we, we do. Other, other communities have done so. A really significant example of that is an organization called Low Income Housing Institute. They serve the Puget Sound area in Washington. So they have tiny homes that are considered habitable by HUD standards. There are checklists and guidance around that. And the basic minimum requirements is that they get wired for electricity, have heat available and also have water available. It doesn't necessarily have to be running water, as far as I understand. Like it could be a pump or it could be, you know, some other wash basin or something like that. So there are lots of things that we could just make little tweaks to and probably find a pretty significant return on that.
Thank you. And then I wondered if you could, excuse me, provide a little more context for the cost estimates that you provided for the safe sleeping shelters. Six hun, six million a year for five hundred beds. I mean, that seems huge in my mind considering how lean our rest stops are in terms of how they operate now.
Yeah, so the, the numbers there are based on a staffing model that includes identif, that includes a lot more services than are currently happening in rest stops. So all of the models that I proposed include not only three meals a day, but also supervision on site, usually by a person who's, who's identified as the natural leader who lives on the site and is then supervised and mentored by a service provider. It's a great way for us to scale up the system while also providing employment opportunities. It's, it's so genius. I can hardly handle it. That's how the designated temporary shelter sites ran. And then they, so that's a bit why. They also include these cost projections, includes some housing navigation support too. So we would have actual housing navigators who would work between some number of these sites with a certain caseload of people. And that sort of speaks to this, just to kind of bridge from this temporary piece into how do we want to deal with this long term? That's that navigation system thing that I mentioned very briefly at the beginning. How do we help people actually continue moving up into more and more suitable housing over time? And that can start at the, you know, getting someone on a tent platform, you know, in, into a microsite, and that can really stabilize them enough to make the next step.
So you haven't offered us necessarily, maybe you don't know yet. What the estimated cost of the navigation services themselves might be, regardless of whether we're providing beds?
I have not separated out that cost from the cost of each individualized site. Um, but we could easily pull out operational, like, budget for the whole entire system away from capital. And I mean, we could, we could figure out lots of different ways to show that, but that would be totally feasible if you'd like to see that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have Counselor Pryor and then Counselor Taylor.
Thanks, uh, I, uh. I'm, after getting over my initial shock, I, I think we need to, to step up. We absolutely need to do this and. Uh, um, as I've said before, I'm a long-term person. So like Commissioner Bozovich, I want to think of structural, long-term solutions. I recognize that if there's a hole in a boat, I need to patch that hole so no more water comes in. But at the same time, the boat's not got water and I gotta bail it out. And so I recognize there is an acute, immediate issue that has to be dealt with. Patch the hole, but also bail out the boat. That means I have to come up with sufficient resources to cover doing both of those tasks. I think that's what we're confronting now. And based on your initial figures, I think we're looking at the range of around eighteen to twenty million dollars. If we want to try to do both strategies at the same time, because I agree. You don't just put people in housing first. Uh, they will fail. You have to provide support services that cost money. If you really want to structurally fix the problem, it will take money. And so for me, one of the conversations is. How and to what degree are we prepared to find up to twenty million dollars a year? Not every year forever, but at least for the acute period, twenty million dollars a year to be able to deal with this holistically. Because I remember one of the recommendations of the TAC report was, you don't do part of this. It's a whole enchilada or it ain't gonna work. And so if we want this thing to work, we're gonna have to do the whole thing simultaneously. So that all of the different steps can support each other. That's a twenty million dollar price tag. And so I'm not scared of doing the work, and we do need to find the locations. I completely agree with that. But we need to do this work simultaneously and in a coordinated way, both the long-term and the acute. And I frankly want to say, let's figure out how we're gonna come up with that twenty million dollars a year for however long we need to do it.
Mayor, uh, may we go to a commissioner, Commissioner Byrne?
Thank you. I would like to remind us that, because this presentation talks about transformation. Please understand, the transformation has occurred. It's a transformation that has vastly disintegrated the social safety net. We are seeing but a symptom of it. And, um. And what we are trying to do is move things back to what most of us grew up with as a closer to normal. I felt, perhaps this is unpopular, but I found that a very impressive presentation. A very unimpressive situation, almost a dystopia. Um, so I have a couple of questions in that context. Sarai, I've been to one of these, this is your first one of these group seances, and. I remember asking the TAC reporters, uh, did you count the homeless statistics? Provided by every school district in Lane County in your assumptions and recommendations. They said no. Have you factored that into this sort of updated version?
Because this is an update of TAC projections, and that was the previous direction indicated by, uh, the policy bodies. That is, youth are not specifically included in this. That said. They are included in this, populations we should probably consider, uh, because they are, uh, an important segment of our unhoused population.
Since I'm looking at this damn clock, it's ticking really quickly. In your presentation, did you say? If you added up all those things, was it eighteen and a half million per year for operations? Operations aren't nerdy. They're operations, how things work. Is that what that number was about, which was about servicing about a thousand beds? Is that correct?
Those numbers are not exclusively operations. Some of them, like the hotel ones, include the cost of renting the motels. Um, and then other ones mostly include the cost of setup. The only one that doesn't include any operations. Or rather, doesn't include any capital, sorry about that, is the navigation center number of one point eight million. Which is the estimated amount that it'll cost to provide those services to sixty-five at low barrier shelter, long term. And then the other one is the quick build, um, units. So those don't include capital because of that kind of discrepancy.
And I, I found in other circumstances of life, the data doesn't speak for itself. You interpreted data so we would understand what we were seeing. Is there any mechanism to have? Sort of not politicized, but have the people you're talking about. Look at the data and respond to it to see if your interpretation that you're presenting is consistent with how they feel about it?
Yes, I, um, actually talk to people with lived experience, advocate service providers every day. Um, and so they definitely have seen all of these numbers and these recommendations. This and the inclement weather strategies and, um, have informed these, uh, recommendations as well.
Hey, thanks. Thank you very much. Thank you all for, uh, letting me ask the question.
Okay, Counselor Taylor and then Counselor Zelenka.
Thank you. I wonder if you looked at the, uh, beacon in Madison. A downtown shelter, which I understand is very successful. And I've, I've, I do think we need an emergency shelter, and I think it should be downtown. To get the people off the streets, which would help those people and also help the people who don't want them on the streets. And other thing, you, did you think about single room occupancy?
Yes, as a, a permanent supportive housing strategy, I think that's a really promising model, for sure. Really affordable and, um, also could solve some of the problems around people not wanting to be alone in their four walls.
Well, if you're single room occupancy, you could be alone on your four walls. I'm thinking of a place with the bath down the hall. It could be very inexpensive. And most people. Have, they're like the people who were featured, the, or one person who was featured in the newspaper recently, um, have some income. And for a few hundred a month, they could probably rent a room. And it's, and I don't think it needs supervision. I don't understand why you think there has to be supervision wherever they are. People can accidental, or because of the circumstances of life, they could no longer have a house, but they are perfectly capable of. Handling their own affairs and, and figuring out how to live someplace and, and maybe planning to move to a better place. And I think, I think SRO and, and shelter combined are two of the most important things we could do. And if we could somehow support, you said, have you thought of how we could pay? Support or get someone to build a single room occupancy?
There are a lot of really great, um, development models, and I've been looking into one in particular, um, called, uh, Gorilla Developers in Portland. And they recently developed a mixed-use, uh, mixed-income SRO property, I think could be really informative for us here.
Thank you.
Counselor Zelenka.
Yeah, a question about the prioritization of, of all this stuff. I, I don't disagree with it. I think it's, it's probably correct. Just wondering if you could kind of walk us through the, the, the rationale and the discussion that you guys had to come up with. The prioritization of these things and when they were gonna happen. The, the, the homelessness system transformation. Team members, which does not have a good acronym, uh, seems like, you know, really good group of certified smart people. So maybe you could just kind of talk about what, how you guys came up with the prioritization list that you did.
Yeah, certainly. So the, um, policy team, uh, that is Steve Mokrheisky, Sarah Medary, Karen Gaffney, uh, and. Christie and Greg, Christie Hammett and Greg Rickoff, uh, all worked together, uh, in May as we were looking at the budget. And kind of looking at how do we need to implement this in the coming year, uh, and identified what were the emerging needs that we thought could make the biggest impact in the near term. Um, and that we could do at once, because all, you know, all ten recommendations at once is, is really, um, not something that we're, we're gonna be able to move forward. So we looked at, um, what were the things that we thought were most needed, and, um, it looks to us like. Street outreach is one of the most critical components, uh, of this, but that's partly to make connections with people and bring them in. To receiving services and being kind of a part of getting their feet on the ground and into housing. Um, yeah, so we, I mean, we really worked through that in quite a few meetings and, and kind of honed that in. Uh, and then once we had determined that for the budget process, of course, we then were looking at, oh, wow, because of COVID nineteen, it turns out there's all these other impacts. And that's where landlord engagement kind of hit the list as one of the top priorities as well. So it's sort of a. We thought these would make the most impact, and also here are some of the immediate things that we have to respond to.
Yeah, impact-based. So, yeah, that sounds good. I actually wasn't very, uh, blown away by the budget. Actually, it was less than I thought it was gonna be. I think, um, one of maybe our next task is to figure out what the funding sources would be, whether or not that's a. Uh, 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 a levy that we put out to the voters or others, uh, uh, other types of mechanisms. But I, I am encouraged by, by that number, actually. I think that if, uh, if we took something to the voters. For instance, and said eighteen million dollars would, a year as a levy, which wouldn't be very much for folks. Would, would, uh, have, in the county would have a significant, significant impact on homelessness in, in our community. I think, I think people of, uh, Lane County in Eugene would step up to that and do it. So I'm encouraged.
I wanted to take a moment just to say a few things as well. I know that we don't have a lot of time left. But I just wanted to express, uh, my gratitude for the presentation. And I absolutely agree that the by-name list is far more accurate than the point-in-time count. I know for years, people have thought that that was an undercount. And this helps us see reality, uh, much more clearer in our own community. So I think that is a, a big step forward for us so that we know the actual size of. The issue we have in front of us. And I also, um, appreciate the quick build design. You know, what I don't want to see is us throwing millions of dollars, both agencies throwing millions of dollars every year into this. And it not return some kind of investment capital in the future of drawing down these numbers. And so those, um, uh, those quick builds or other designs that turn into permanent features. To address this year after year, I think is a, a really important step for us to make. And lastly, uh, on the financials, I would like to see some more in-depth financials. Cause really does come down to how much resources we have available compared to what the need is and what that actual cost is. So in the future, uh, if we could have, uh, you know, a list of the items, how much they're all gonna cost and some more detail. And then how much has the county and city or other agencies committed to each of those items? I absolutely think, you know, the financials are really what is gonna drive us. To get some concrete things in the ground and also open our eyes to the need that we have. We do have a couple of other, well, three more commissioners in the queue. We have a cup, uh, a couple more minutes. I'll, um, see if Mayor, i- if you had anybody that was not on the list as participants that wanted to go in queue.
I don't have any. I would like to jump in and ask one quick thing, though. Uh, a quick question about the two, the two challenges are sites and capacity within the providers. And I wonder if you could just, uh, speak to how we are assessing the capacity of the providers and how we'll move forward on that.
Yes, it's a really good question. Um, as far as assessing, at this point, it's been relatively informal. It's been through, you know, asking, hey, do you want to do this or can you take this on? And then saying, uh, no, please stop. Uh, so that's, that's kind of the way that it is right now. Um, I'd say that the service providers themselves understand what they need really well. And what I would love for us to be able to do is to listen to that and work with them to help them to build capacity. Relatively quickly, but with substance. And so, you know, in my work as a, when I was working in nonprofits, I worked, um, at, uh, you know. Community housing development organization at the height of, actually at the dawn and height of the housing crisis in two thousand and eight. And that work made us scale very quickly without the appropriate infrastructure. And so I think it's really, uh, important for us to help them do this in a way that doesn't put them at risk of kind of collapse. So, um, yeah, I think it's really just super paying attention to what they need and making sure that they're adequately funded, that our contracting works for them. And pieces like that, um, that would need to be informed by them. Thank you for asking that.
Okay, uh, if there aren't any other counselors in the queue, I'll go to Commissioner Bozovich.
Thank you, um. Real quick, let me understand how you end up on the homeless by-name list. If you access services once for one night, are you on the list?
You're on the list for that month. Yes.
So do we have an idea by percentage, how many people were just accessed once for one night versus how many people accessed all three hundred and sixty-five days of the year?
I can get that information for you, for sure. So I can ask for that. I don't have it offhand.
Yeah, because one of the things about point in time is, is that's supposed to be an estimate of our, you know, worst case by day. And that's what the mathematical model was built on by the folks that wrote the TAC report. And now we're changing the database to something that one day counts. And estimating need for shelter from that. And, and I have to say, I'm a little surprised by this whole thing. Because it took till page twenty-three of a twenty-seven page report to get to the fact that you wanted to completely change the recommendations. From a national consultant on homelessness about how we were going to deal with this issue locally. And get to keeping homelessness short and rare and, and, you know, all those good things. So I still believe that Housing First connected with intensive case management. Not just Housing First on its loan, own, but with intensive case management is our long-term best solution and best investment of our resources. And frankly, if I had eighteen to twenty million dollars of extra resources to invest. You know, I've got a whole lot of services we cut back in two thousand eleven, twelve and thirteen. As we lost our SRS funds that I would sure like to put back in service. You know, it, you know, so this is in competition with a lot of other things. Um, so I just have to say, I'm a little surprised that the emphasis was on the change in the data and not. On continuing the TAC, which was the first twenty-two pages of the report.
Okay, I'll go to the next commissioner, Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Chair Buck, and thanks for that point, Commissioner Bozovich. You know, uh, permanent supportive housing is very expensive. We have a fifty-one unit, uh, complex that is currently being completed, that the county is completing on MLK Boulevard. Won't go into details, but it's very, very expensive to provide that type of housing. That was my point. There are two questions that re, really need to be answered. And Joe Bernie, you brought up that you weren't particularly satisfied with the report. Well, it doesn't capture these two facets. One thing is where are the homeless people coming from? It's very dynamic, um, the, the situation in, in Eugene in particular, if you see the numbers. But in Lane County in general, the numbers are rising. Where are the homeless people coming from? I'll get the answers to that in a second. The second question that we have to be honest about is why is housing so expensive and so unavailable? In Lane County and in Eugene? What are the cost factors that drive up the cost of housing to where the median income can just barely afford housing? To where the rental market has, uh, has two-bedroom apartments going for twelve hundred dollars a month? So the, regarding where are the homeless people coming from, um, the numbers are much larger than they've been ever before. And we need to be honest once again about how are people becoming homeless in Lane County? Anecdotally, we hear that people are getting tickets from elsewhere, from Boise to come to Eugene. Uh, I don't believe that's, uh, that's very broadly true. We also do hear about a lot of people who can no longer afford their housing. We hear about seniors who on fixed incomes at, find themselves in a situation where they can't afford their rent anymore. And we find people who are. And we find people who are who have newly acquired physical disabilities that cost that force them out of their housing. We need to answer these questions. We will be spending quite a bit of time figuring out where the homeless people are coming from. And why is it so expensive to live, to find a home in Eugene and Lane County?
All right, we have one more commissioner that would like to speak. If it's okay, we'll do that. And then maybe if our manager and administrator want to help wrap it up. If that makes sense to everybody. Commissioner Bernie?
Thank you very much. As we're honing this down better, which we will constantly do, I presume. And as we get answers to some of these questions. Which I believe you, we shall do, I presume. I I think at the same time, Councilperson Zelenka, I agree with him. I think if there are ways to generate this amount and have a bias towards action, always, always modifying and adjusting. I honestly, and if it does not include with existing county dollars, which was the concern, I believe that Commissioner Bozovich raised. I personally believe that there might be mechanisms that are relatively painless to generate some of those dollars. To partner with a national foundation that is looking for community based solutions to homelessness and shelter. While we complain about the cost of housing here and it is high and getting exorbitant. It's one of the least costly places on the West Coast, like the West Coast states in terms of median prices. I believe that, and if we look at this more globally, like yes, we can, let's tackle the whole damn thing if possible and move forward. I think we can talk, we ought to start talking solutions so we see units produced, we see services generated. We see foundations that want to invest their dollars. Because I really do believe there's a unique play of capacity here. I also privately, you know, two developers that I believe will likely be responsible for creating several hundred units over the next year. So I really would like to encourage us as best we can, as critically as possible. To support moving forward with something and support Sarai in her, in her and in her work, helping us do our work. Thank you.
Very good. So we can have our city manager and administrator wrap us up here for our meeting, Mr. Mokrhysky.
Well, I thank you to the Board of Commissioners and Eugene City Council for taking the time here tonight. I think it was a great discussion. Thank you to Sarai Johnson and to our staff, both at the City of Eugene and Lane County for all the work that they put into. What we think is is really a great presentation. Think this was a wonderful discussion and the feedback from all of you. I know that there were some comments regarding permanent supportive housing and questions about that and not as much time we spent on that tonight. I want to reassure both the board and the council. That we remain committed to permanent supportive housing as. These, the the stronger solution in ending the cycle of homelessness. And as many folks have indicated, this really is about making investments in all of these systems to create a pathway. To end homelessness. There's not a silver bullet, there's not one solution that will fix this challenge. So on permanent supportive housing, you know, we're, we believe we're about half to two thirds of the way there in terms of the commitments that were. Identified in the original TAC report of three hundred fifty units. Fifty one units at the MLK property that the county owns and additional twenty units. With secured funding on county owned property at the fairgrounds. Additional units at the planned Eleventh and Turnerton project, another forty plus units between various community. Organizations and sponsors and Netco and non-Netco, Dev Northwest and other organizations. So there's a lot of work going in there, a lot of funding that's been put forward, land that's been identified and leveraged. And we need to continue that work. And then I think I will just say that the the suggestion Chair Buck made regarding identifying and clearly defining the. The cost elements of these plans, updating that information and identifying. Where there are gaps and what organizations and agencies are funding different pieces of this. I think is really going to aid in our future conversations so that we can get down to. Okay, what are we doing and where have we checked the box and where there are needs and who's participating in different ways? I think it will also help both of our organizations to consider where we're investing resources. That maybe we want to consider diverting into these priorities, right? It may be that we have existing resources going into other areas that aren't helping create this pathway. So I think there were some great ideas that came from this conversation. And I just want to thank the great staff work. And I, I know Sarah and I are really pleased, Sarah and I had the pleasure of interviewing for Sarai's role and hiring and bringing her. On board. It's a joint shared position between our organizations. And again, I think it's representative of the work that's happening in both organizations and the collaborative work that we're doing together. So we look forward to what is a a tall mar, a tall mountain that we have to climb together.
Thank you, Steve. And I also want to thank you, Sarai. That was a really great presentation and really paints a picture. And I think, you know, part of the journey that we're on together is is building this partnership and system that. I don't know if a lot of other places have done besides Eugene and Lane County. One of the things that Steve asked us, what that Steve and I asked Sarai to do was to push us. And to give her like free access to us, direct access to us, to push us if she saw places in our organizations where we needed to move farther faster. So there's a lot of things that are in this report and in this presentation that I think. Are are doing that. And I really appreciate that, even feel myself feeling uncomfortable sometimes with the numbers. And I, and I know it's also the right numbers. I've shared with a number of you that I did participate in the point in time count this year because I have heard for years from people like it's an undercount, it's an undercount. So this year I did it and I can tell you that it it felt like that to me because I I knocked on many car campers that wouldn't respond and so I couldn't count them. So I do, as much as I really dislike the higher numbers, I feel like it's, it's pretty honest. And I know we have a lot to do and I I kind of share in Sarai's enthusiasm, like we're going to figure this out. We have the right group of people, the right leadership, and I'm just glad to be on the team at this time to make a difference. So thank you.
Thank you. So I think that's a wrap unless anyone has some. Final, final comments, but I think I want to appreciate again, as everyone has appreciated Sarai and your work and the clarity and the thoroughness of that. Discussion and I think your priorities are well established. We know where we need to go and thank you for laying that groundwork for us. And with that, I adjourn the council meeting and turn it over to Commissioner Buck.
Thank you all very much. And we have adjourned the Board of County Commissioners meeting for this evening as well.
Good night all.